Mr. Chair. Whenever you want to start the meeting.
I'm gonna go ahead and call Raul, if I may. Abelino, oh, through the chair. I'm gonna call Raul. Call Raul, okay. Board Member Cruz.
Here.
Board Member Julia.
Present.
Board Member de la Siera.
Present.
Vice Chair Senra.
Present.
And Chair Leontio.
Present.
Okay, you have quorum.
Such allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'll calling Raul for the approval of the minutes. Board Member Julia.
Yes.
Board Member Cruz.
Yes.
Board Member de la Sierra.
Yes.
Vice Chair Senra.
Yes.
Chairman Leontio.
Yes.
Okay, minutes have been approved, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, next would be to open for public comments, not related to any of the items.
Next would be to open up for public comments, not related to the items.
We're now to open the discussion for a public comment, and whoever is going to speak, please stand and take the oath.
No one.
Okay, public comment is closed.
Before we enter to the quasi judicial public hearings, it's important, I'm gonna read first the disclaimer, and then I'm going to ask all of you if you have had any ex-party communication, to please disclose that at this time. Please be advised that the following items on the board's agenda are quasi judicial in nature, an opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made after the applicant and staff have made their presentation on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due weight. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of 10 copies. Further details of the quasi judicial procedure may be obtained from the clerk. At this time, if any of you have, I'm gonna call the first item, and as I call the first item, if you have any ex-party communication, you may disclose it at that time. But before I do, I think it would be prudent to swear in anybody who's going to be giving testimony for any of the items today. For those of you providing public testimony regarding the items presented, I will be swearing you in. As you are already standing, please raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, thank you, you may be seated. Perfect, the first matter before you for consideration is VARH 2024-0489. This is, the applicant is Isabel Maria Fernandez, and the address is 16520 Northwest 83rd Court, Miami Lakes, Florida, 33016. At this time, if any of you have had any ex-party communication, please disclose that.
I have not, Raul.
I have none.
I have none either.
In order for us to move forward, the town will present its case first, and then afterwards, we will hear from the applicant. And then we can hear from anybody from the public who wishes to present evidence or testimony.
Hello, hello, good evening, everyone. So, this is VARH 2024-0489. Applicant's name is Isabel Maria Fernandez. This is located at 16520 Northwest 83rd Court, Miami Lakes, 33016. This is a residential district. This was originally deferred from the January meeting because they updated the survey from, it was, it was listed as two foot, two foot six inches from the property line, but it was updated to three foot, three foot setback from the property line where five feet are required. And the second variance was to allow the after the fact gazebo with a three foot six, six inch setback from the residence where 10 feet are required. This after the fact gazebo is 17 by 11. It's in the northwest corner of their rear yard that was built without permits. The gazebo is 187 square feet, where the maximum is 350 square feet. And staff recommends denial of the proposal as shown in the attached plans. That's all.
Board, you may have, you may ask any questions that you wish of staff, or if not, we can hear from the applicant.
To the chair, you say that this was presented in the January meeting before?
Correct.
And what is the difference between the January meeting petition and this one here?
So, if you look at the first variance, in the January meeting, it said two feet six inches, but now it says three feet. They, they gave us an updated survey for this one.
So, if you recall, in the January meeting, there was a gentleman that testified that he had looked at the condition and that he felt that it was larger than the two foot six that was on the current survey, on the survey that was presented at the time, and that therefore, we couldn't go forward with considering the application because it seemed like it was incorrect. So, they, they obtained a new survey, and, and they're coming in with the corrected survey. And we can ask, because she's looking at me, and maybe she wants to tell her story. Maybe we can ask the applicant as to the situation with the surveys.
Yeah, through the chair, it was, he said it in Spanish, the gentleman that was talking.
Oh, yeah.
He was speaking in Spanish. So, we understood and we gave him the chance to, you know, bring it up again, put the correct survey.
Through the chair, though. Right now, I guess the survey is showing that the gazebo is three feet from the setback, instead of before it was 2.6 on one end. I think on the other end, I'm looking at the agenda item back in January. It appears that that lot is kind of like on a, it's not completely a straight line, so like the back part may be a little bit further from the setback.
Yeah, we were going off of the point that was nearest, that would infringe upon the, upon the setback the most. That corner that's closest to the.
Right, so at its closest point, it's three feet from the side.
Correct, yeah.
And then, okay.
Chair, do you want to bring the applicant up? I make a motion to bring the applicant up. Motion to bring the applicant up.
To bring the applicant?
Yeah, to be able to speak to us. Isabel, you know?
Can the applicant come up?
You have to give your names and address.
Okay, good evening, my name is Anna Evia, this is Isabel Fernandez, and we're the property owners of 16520 Northwest 83rd Court. And we have Roberto here with us, he's our general contractor.
Yeah, I'm, hi, everyone, I'm Robert Rianis, I'm a general contractor who will get engaged on any corrections or legalization of the violations. If I may, I would like to add that the geography of the, of the lot, it's kind of unique. And from the, the beginning of the property line to the, to the actual house, in, in one point, it's actually less than two feet. So, at the end, towards, towards the end where the gazebo is sitting, it kind of expands, and it's kind of a unique situation. Because in some sections, if you look at the survey, you do meet the 10 feet from the back property. In some others, you don't, because it's, it's an angle there. Property goes in, the property line goes in an angle. It goes from very narrow to expanding out. And if, if there are to meet the, the requirement, there's no point. The gazebo will be on top of the pool, like literally on top of the pool.
Through the chair, how much space do you have from the gazebo to the pool?
I would say about three feet, three and a half feet.
From the gazebo to the pool, looks like to me like about 11.
11?
Yeah, from here.
That's what it says in the survey?
No, I'm looking at the survey, and there's no dimension from how far the gazebo is from the pool. But the width of the gazebo is 11 feet, and I look at the next space, and it looks to be about 11 feet, maybe between nine, six, and 11 feet. So, how much space do you have from the edge of the gazebo?
The, from the edge to the gazebo to the pool, it'll be roughly, I would say, no more than five feet.
Like, it can't be according to the survey.
If, I could be mistaken, because I mean, I don't have it.
I'm looking at the survey, and the survey, the survey shows it to be about.
I would, I would trust the survey.
From the survey, it looks like it's at least more than 12 feet. If you were to scale that, if it's drawn to scale.
It could be, are, are we talking from the, there's an overhang.
That's the overhang is what I think is there. Because I'm looking at the survey of the January meeting. And it appears that that has like a two foot overhang.
Yes, it does.
To the front?
Yes, to the front.
Yeah, all the way around.
The overhang is drawn right there.
Well, in the back, I don't know.
No, to the back, it's a little less than two feet, but it's, there's more overhang on the front than the back.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the survey from here. Oh, that thing, yeah.
It's basically four aluminum columns with aluminum roof, that's basically it. It's basically four aluminum columns with aluminum roof. That's basically the, the fixed structure.
And, and the, it seems on, from the pictures that there's an outdoor kitchen built.
There is, there is.
Underneath the gazebo, right?
Yes, there is. At the edge of the, the.
And that outdoor kitchen is.
It's mainly, the frame is aluminum and it's PVC. All the walls are PVC and, and the countertop, it's, it's granite.
Are there pads at the column points?
Are there what?
Pads, concrete pads at the column points, do you know?
No, no, no.
It's just sitting on the.
No, it's just, yeah, no.
Sitting on the six inches or four inches of concrete?
Correct.
So, there's no foundation?
No, oh, you mean on the columns?
Correct.
Yeah, the columns have a, a, a two by two by two, uh, uh, foundation on each column.
Did you drill there to see it or how do you?
Yes, yes. It's, I, I, I was witness when they, when they did it.
When they did a drilling to see what was there?
And I believe they have photographs of it. I don't know if they have submitted it, but.
No, I didn't see any photographs of it.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, the foundation was.
I'm asking you because you said you're the contractor.
Yep. I mean, I wasn't the contractor who did that.
No, I understand.
But, but I'm also a personal friend and I was present there when, when they did that and yeah, they.
I understand that part of, I'm trying to.
They dig a hole on each column, uh, two by two by two and there's rebar framing and everything. Yeah, it's done, it's done properly. And then on top of that, you have the six inch, uh, uh, concrete slab that they did all around the yard.
If I may, just interrupt a second. I'm looking again, unfortunately, I'm looking at the January and in the January, it does have what you're saying, the two by two column as part of the plans that were submitted.
It shows a pad with a two by two column there. Okay. No, because I'm looking at the one for right now.
Yeah, I know, me too, but I brought both of the, the survey and now I'm.
I can look it up too.
Yeah, because when they, when, you know, when they submit plans to, to legalize it, they're gonna have to.
You should also have plans from the engineer that we engage, Alime Aguilar. That should be part of your records because.
No, so you.
No, what we can see right now is a survey. It's basically a survey I can see and then two photographs.
Yeah, that's a revised survey they did because, uh, uh, we, we believe that they didn't do it correctly and we contacted the surveyor company and they went out to the field again and they redo it and that's the new measurements that you see, which is not really much if we're taking into consideration the, the five feet setback. But it's, it's something.
To the chair, I, I have a question, but it's actually a question to the staff on your recommendation. Is it okay to ask that right now or not? Is it okay? What is the, the concern that could pose problems to the surrounding residents? What kind of problems are we referring to?
What are we, what is the question exactly? Like what?
Well, it says here on your, on the statement in the background, it says, um, the size of the, of the, of the gazebo is less than what, what is allowed, but however, its location could pose problems for surrounding residents.
Right, it's too close to the property line, basically. Five feet is what's considered the right happy medium of, of location for a structure of this type.
Okay. What I see that they have approval letters from surrounding owners.
Yeah, if I may, I was gonna add to that, that they, even the neighbors came to the previous hearing and they, they, they have no issues with the gazebo being there.
Who lives, who lives on that side where the gazebo is? Is that Omar Samora?
No, that's Elsie.
Huh?
Elsie, Elsie Marquez and then.
And she, she's one of the ones that signed off?
Yeah.
Elsie Marquez? She's right in the back of the gazebo. And she doesn't have a problem with the way the gazebo's.
I mean, they, you know, they, they're well buffered by.
She was here in the previous hearing and there's a letter there also.
In the back, the, the hedge that's there now, that, that shows in the picture, that is still there.
It's still there, yes. Yeah. Actually, due to the hedge, she, she won't be able to see the gazebo because it's not really like, like a huge structure. It's just aluminum columns and the roof and the, the kitchen countertop set on the, on the, on, on the back line of the gazebo. It's actually below the concrete wall that's there because there is a concrete wall there and then the hedge.
I normally don't like to give my opinion whether I like it or not, but I, so this looks nice.
No, it is very nice actually.
To the conversation. I hate to get into that.
No, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's done in good taste, but what, what, what really, you know, what really bothers me is the amount of concrete that, that, that's, and, and this is not a.
Not an issue, apparently.
Not an issue now.
Yeah, that's the question, that's the question I had too, the concrete coverage around the whole house. It's.
Where's the water going?
Well, it looks like it's almost seventy percent all the way. It goes in the swimming pool, the only place it goes. Looks like they have almost seventy percent coverage around the whole property.
Yeah, that was a separate issue, yes, and we're aware of it. At the front, we have a lot of, they have a lot of land, a lot of yard, as you can see on the, on the survey, but in the back, again, due to the nature of, of the whole lot, it's, they, they cover a lot of it with that, that concrete that it's, that has the little patches of, of artificial grass turf in between. Was very trendy now that everybody's doing, like the slabs of concrete. It's not one solid piece, but it, it's, it's in slabs, rectangle slabs all around, yeah.
I have a question to staff now. If, if, let's say the board were to approve a variance, they would still require an after the fact permit?
Yes.
Correct.
So, the issue of lot coverage may still be an issue. I just want you to be aware.
Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to help and correct any violations and pull permits, do whatever needs to be corrected and, and we'll do so. I'm here to engage in that.
The lot coverage pertains to the structures of the roof, not, not the, the amount of concrete that they have on the, on the side. This is the, you know, percolated.
The pervious, impervious area, that would have to be.
Yeah, that's permitting, yes, yes.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely bring everything to, to the proper code, whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, the, the architect will have to do the, the calculations on, on, you know, what's pervious.
I believe we do have calculations already from the engineer, Alime Aguilar, and you should have that on record because that was submitted. Probably in the previous.
The thing is, all those plans were in the January agenda.
Probably is in the previous hearing, yes.
But I think it's just the, what they had there was the, the structural stuff. I don't see all those other calculations that will be required once you obtain an after.
I do have electronic files here that I could submit and send.
To the chair here, the property should not have concrete to the very edge of the property and it does all along that north side, pretty much all the way down. They have concrete right to the edge of the property.
There's like a foot, it's not all the way to the edge. It's like a, a foot, a foot and a half, almost two feet.
I see point four eight in one place. I see.
One six.
Yeah, point, point one six at another one, point one six at another spot, you know, so.
Yeah, towards the front of the property, the property line and the actual wall of the property, there's, there's like two and a half feet because it, it goes in an angle.
No, I, I can see that it's, it's a parabolic lot. I can tell.
But yes, they, they.
And if I may remind everybody that it's not a variance they're requesting, therefore it would be a condition of any approval that they would have to remove all concrete within five feet of the property line.
All concrete within five feet of the property.
Right, because the, the concrete is a, it would be a separate variance that has not been requested.
That has not been, that was the question that I had there. Because I mean, there's a lot of coverage.
Through the chair.
And if you have to, by the way, and according to Suzanne Alonso, if you have to remove the five feet that you're supposed to have away from the edge of the property, then you have to move the gazebo.
Not only that, but we, we probably even have to somehow move the pool closer to the house too. Because there's no, there's no five feet from, from the edge of the pool to, to the property line.
Seven point four four. I see, I see seven point four four, so it'd be two feet. You, you're gonna have to come back to us, most likely.
Which is the requirement for the pool.
And get the requirements for the pool to correct it because you have seven point four four.
The pool, I believe, has been there since they built the property from, from.
I understand, I understand, I understand. But if, if they say you have to remove the concrete, then you'll have to come for a variance to keep it.
Right.
If you didn't do a variance at the beginning.
I, I thought that we were doing the whole thing. No, we're only dealing with the, with the gazebo, I guess.
Okay, I'm getting the information from you.
The pool was built in two thousand and five, according to Miami date.
Miami date.
So, we were incorporated by two thousand and five, correct? Or right around?
Two thousand, we got, we became town, but the building department was given to us later.
That pool permit should have been issued by, we should have that in, in our town records, the pool permit.
Two thousand?
Yeah, that was the previous owners. They acquired the property in two thousand and thirteen.
When they acquired the property, the pool was in?
Through the chair, I have a question.
Was the gazebo in?
No.
The gazebo was not?
No.
So, they could have pulled a permit for that?
Yes, they could. They could have, yes.
Through the chair, I have a question. I know this has come up before. I think last time we had something similar. Have you taken these plans to the Royal Oaks Homeowners' Association and be approved by them?
I believe they have.
Have they been approved?
That I, that answer I do not have. Yes, she believed to, to.
Make sure, please.
Yes.
Because again, the town, the position of the town is, the town requirements are different than the HOA. Like, the town allows more square footage on the gazebo, the HOA is a lot less. So, you might be in compliance with the town, but then you'll be in non-compliance with the HOA.
Yeah, I believe that since January, they submitted all the documentation to.
But make sure that you get a letter from, from, or the plans get something stamped that, and like Mr. Sierra says, biggest issue is with landscaping. You gotta have thirty percent landscaping and I know that the ARB in Royal Oaks are very strict on that with the thirty percent, more strict than the town when it comes to make sure that you comply with the thirty percent.
We'll do whatever it needs to be done to comply.
Yeah, the thing is, it'll become in, in a legal matter with the association, which is a civil matter, doesn't involve us. That's what.
Right.
That's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any more questions or?
No, I don't. I, I don't.
Yeah?
No.
You want to close the meeting? Close it.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf or, or against? Okay, we close the public meeting.
Thank you. So, through the chair, I'd like to hear what the rest of you have to say. I'm perplexed myself, so.
I have, I really don't have that much of a problem on the setback on the, on the, on the north, but I do have a, I do have a, a concern with the, how close it is to the house.
That's. Looks like they have, through the chair here, three foot six away from the, if you look in the picture, because I don't have access to the other drawings, looks like it's three foot six more or less away from the, uh, wall of the residence. It may be a foot away from the overhang.
Which makes it about a foot from the overhang.
From the overhang, right.
But is that from a, a safety thing that you're concerned or just, because I, I was, I was a little bit concerned with the neighbor, but the neighbor is okay with it and I was thinking if, as long as, I don't know, like, can we condition any of these things to maintaining that hedge or the landscaping or something like that? Is that something that we could do?
You can put, you can put it into the.
You can.
Into the motion.
I never had much of a problem. How close they make it to the house?
With the five feet of green area.
Well, they're not gonna have five feet of green area because they're three feet away. So, they would probably have to remove the concrete, as much of the concrete as they can in the back because they probably can't, now you guys are the contractors, if that thing has a two by two footing, obviously it has to have concrete.
Right, so.
Because now we could say you can't have any concrete from the back.
So, whatever, whatever we approve, we have to maintain the thought that they're gonna be asked to be five feet away from the property line with the concrete. They may have to come back to us for.
Correct.
Another hearing, another, lost the word.
I mean, for anything else that's not covered here, they would need to have a separate application.
Have to have a separate application unless we cover that area there where the foundations are to allow them to maintain the gazebo and then bring the rest of the property to the five foot setback. Because we'll have to rip up that gazebo that within the five foot setback with it, with the foundation. That's my question here. Can we, in a motion, include maintaining that area there? Suzanne?
You can sort of word it in a way to say, all other concrete except that directly underneath the gazebo and/or necessary for footers for the gazebo shall be cut back to five feet.
Right, because they're going through all, all this now and then we approve it and then.
Right. So, we would leave like a little bit of a indentation for the gazebo and.
But those, those footers should be deep.
Right, the footer should be deep, but he has to be five feet and it's three feet and you're gonna hit the column. So, you're gonna have to leave concrete around these columns and in that little area for them to be able to operate the gazebo. Otherwise, you gotta pull the kitchen off. You gotta rip everything out of there. So, we have to give them some leeway to allow that area to be encroaching into the five foot setback if we do it, you know, just. What do you think, Mr. Cruz, on what I was bringing up?
My biggest concern again is the, the landscape area, the thirty percent. It's a nice gazebo. I hate to see it go, you know? And let's see, how can we?
Well, we would have to allow them to encroach in the setback only in the area where the gazebo is and where they have the kitchen area of the gazebo into that green area and then they would have to meet. and where they have the kitchen area of the gazebo into that green area, and then they would have to meet the, uh, setback in the green area everywhere south, uh, through the town. We'd have to make a motion including that. Whenever the motion is made.
So they, they would, they would have, they, they would have to cut, um, uh, the slab on the north and on, on, on the, um, on the south side?
Right, yeah, but that will, we don't have a say on that since they...
That's the building department, when they take the plans over there.
Yeah, because they're still gonna have to get an after-the-fact permit, so...
Correct.
So we don't have to make a decision on that.
But, but, what, um, the, the Sierra's saying is, is true that in the, I think we should include the fact that there's two footings there on the gazebo that technically encroach within the five feet, so we should add that.
So is the back of the kitchen all the way. You look at it, the whole back of the kitchen is rolling through there.
That's right.
So you can ask them to hold two feet away, remove the concrete, and hold the rest to be able to keep the kitchen area there.
So for clarification's sake, the request for the gazebo includes the concrete underneath the gazebo as part of the variance that they're requesting. It does not, however, include the rest of the concrete on the property.
So it includes whatever's underneath the gazebo, including the foundation?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so...
Whatever's underneath the kitchen that's shown there, now how far...
Because it's understood to be part of the gazebo construction.
How far into the, into the line would, would that go? To the edge of the kitchen? Does it go to the very edge of the kitchen that they're, uh, asking to have approved? Or does it go all the way to the property line where they have it? Leaving the concrete in that area all the way to the property line?
Five feet from the property.
Is this the footprint of the gazebo?
Just the footprint of the gazebo, correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna say that the three feet is to the column.
Yeah, three feet is to the column. On the front, in the back, there's a little bit more room than that, because it's at an angle.
Yeah, in the back is three, three seven five.
Three seven five-ish-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah, tho- those lots in Royal Oaks, they're all, none of them are ninety degrees, they're eighty-seven. Lovell, may he rest in peace, back in the days, he did that because he would gain one more lot per subdivision by doing that.
Oh, my God.
So, and that creates a lot of issues when you're designing, because people think and assume that it's a ninety-degree lot, and it's not, it's eighty-seven. So it's a lot of, uh, issues with the setback when it comes to that.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, they did that since day one.
I'm gonna go ahead and for discussion purposes and make a motion to approve the variance with the condition that the landscape, uh, a landscape hedge has to be maintained in the, um, rear of the gazebo and that we are, um, acknowledging the concrete underneath as not being, you know, a variance for that or including that.
It is included.
Right, including that. Only as to that area, because that's the only thing that's in front of us, basically. We, everything else is gonna be addressed when they do the after-the-fact permit in terms of landscaping requirements and pervious and impervious and all those things, right?
We, we can touch that?
Um, I...
They have to apply.
They have to apply for, and that they have to apply for an after-the-fact permit, where all those other things will be addressed. And if there's a, any variance, they would have to come back.
Right, they want a variance for the rest of it, they'll have to come back to us.
Basically, though, when, once you do the five-foot all-around, um, setback plus the pool, because remember, the pool doesn't count as, um, the pool counts as open...
Right.
Open green area.
Right, so when you do that, most, they're mostly probably okay with the, with their calculations.
But...
They're maybe a little off, but it's not gonna be by much. Uh, it's, uh, it's, when you start expanding the concrete to the edges is when things start getting very silly, so that's where they're at right now. But once they cut back all that concrete, it's very likely that they're okay.
My, my intent, though, on this would be, uh, this variance approval strictly for the area of the gazebo, not the entire site.
Right.
At least that's my motion.
Let me read how I wrote, how I, I wrote what I think is your intention, and you may feel free to...
Go ahead.
Sarah, go ahead.
Uh, I've written down two conditions of approval, and number one is a landscape hedge barrier to be maintained at all times uh, between, behind the, I'm gonna specify behind. And all concrete except the concrete directly under the gazebo shall be cut back to meet the required five-foot setback.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, now structurally, how about the two-foot column in the back? Don't they have two by two?
Yeah, that, that will be included.
That'll be included, okay.
Because it's directly under the gazebo.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, calling role with the conditions stated. Board member de la Sierra?
Yes.
Board member Cruz?
Yes.
Board member Julia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Senra?
Yes.
And Chairman Leonsio?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with the conditions stated.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'm gonna call the next item.
Yes? Uh, they were approved.
Foot condition.
Condition, I guess.
The next matter, um, is variance twenty twenty-five zero zero four six. Uh, this is for GT Homes Miami Lakes. Um, and as stated before, if any of you have, uh, any ex parte, have had any ex parte communication with the applicant, now would be the time to disclose.
I have not.
I have not?
No.
I have not.
Okay, good evening. Justin Tellaria, Planning and Transportation. We're hearing P A R H twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four six. The applicant is GT Homes, and this is concerning Lot eighteen. This, the two variances they are requesting are one variance from section thirteen dash four two six to allow a rear setback of seventeen feet on the property where twenty-five feet is typically required. And the second variance is to allow a lot coverage of forty-two point four percent or thirty-six point five percent, where thirty-five percent is the maximum permitted. That's it.
Through the chair, I have a question. I see that they, they have a couple of different layouts. Is that why the difference in the lot coverage? It looks like they have two different houses that they would be able to put on the lot. Is that the reason?
Yes.
Okay, wanna make sure. Thank you.
My apologies. The, the town, uh, the town is recommending approval of the first request and denial of the second request.
The second request is the lot coverage, correct?
Correct. That's it.
Okay. I have one more question for the staff. Uh, there's a line that goes through the house. Is that the tie line? There's a dotted line here that goes through the house. There's one for the end of the property showing the, uh...
No, that is the line where the setback would be, if they were meeting the setback. Uh, it is a parallel line to the curve of the lake, indicating the twenty-five-foot setback line. And, and what would be basically cut out of the home if they were to meet the twenty-five-foot setback. But if you can see that they mostly tran- transgressed through the open courtyard or the open, um, area, so it's just a little corner that is actually intruding into the setback.
Yeah, Casa Sol, yeah.
Yes.
Is there a tie line on this property?
The property line is not in the same, you can see that they don't meet the top of bank, which would be the tie line in this case, is in a different location than the actual property line. Um, these two properties are the most, the smallest of these, uh, in the area, because they're the ones that have been impacted the most by erosion.
So the top of bank doesn't exist there?
Correct, it's kind of fictional at this point.
It's a fictional...
I think they, they have reconstructed parts of that top of bank.
Yeah, I saw, I saw on the survey...
But the property line is not in the same location as the top of bank. So that's why we're measuring to the property line and not to the top of bank.
Yeah, I saw on the survey that they were looking at filling in on the lot in a couple places.
Correct, there was a prior variance granted to some properties, not to these two particular properties, to reconstruct the top of bank.
Mm-hmm.
Um, these two did not need that, but, am I correct? I, am I correct? Yeah, so these two did not need that, but these are still very eroded properties that, that are much shorter in length than their, than their neighbors.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I seen on the sur, on the surveys. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, do you wanna hear from the applicant? Do you wanna hear from the applicant?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Melissa Tappanaz. Thank you. Uh, my name is Melissa Tappanaz with offices at two hundred South Biscayne Boulevard, Miami. We do have a presentation for you, and I'm hopeful they'll bring it up. There it is, excellent. All right, um, so, um, I'm here representing GT Homes, and my colleague Ben Sherry is here as well. We're here before you to respectfully request these two variances. Uh, they'll allow the lot to be developed, uh, consistent with the surrounding subdivision that was approved, uh, by the Town Council, um, last year. Um, let me just go through this presentation so you can see a little bit of the background. So this is just a refresher, because we were here a while ago, uh, discussing that top of bank issue. And as you may remember, this Palma del Lago subdivision is sixteen point seven six acres. It's an enclave, uh, at the southeast corner of one sixty-second Street and eighty-seventh Avenue. It consists of thirty-seven individually platted lots. The land use is low-density residential, and it's zoned RU one. Um, this is the subdivision plat that was approved back in two thousand and eight. It is part of the Royal Oaks, um, Special Taxing District as it relates to, um, the, uh, security measures. Um, the thirty-seven lots vary in size from seven thousand seven hundred and forty square feet to eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-three square feet. Um, as I mentioned, this is the site plan that was approved back into, in twenty twenty-three. Um, and what it did was approve these thirty-seven lots, and to an earlier question, there were five different models, uh, with ten distinct floor plans and four custom-built homes. Uh, they're proposing lush landscaping as well as lakefronts for all lots except one lot. Uh, this is the rendering of the project will look like once it's complete. Um, you'll see that Lot eighteen, which is the subject of this presentation, is, um, highlighted in red. Uh, the project takes advantage of these, this premier and highly unique location within the town, providing high-end estate-style residences all on waterfronts. As you can see, the home proposed for this property is significantly, and the actual lot, is significantly smaller than the rest of the community, and in fact, is the smallest of these lots. As, we're here because, um, we've had incredible success, um, as it relates to the marketing of this development. Um, the need and demand for new, uh, high-end homes in the town of Miami Lakes is, of course, uh, very strong. Uh, we're here because many of our stakeholders and, uh, potential clients have asked for us to come to the council, uh, to ask for these two homes on these two lots, which really bring us here today. Um, this is Lot eighteen, and, um, it was part of that approved site plan within the Dunhill Isle subdivision. It's located on the portion of the lake that does, in fact, have significant erosion, and the property's rear lot line is not, um, actually, you know, a perfect, uh, line, um, and you can see it's quite unique. Um, so there is this practical difficulty, um, as we move forward to develop the property with these two elegantly designed estate-style residences uh, that are similar and proportionate to the remaining, um, single-family homes in the area. Um, so the two designs that we'll be speaking about is Casa Sol and Casa Dorado. Um, the end purchaser is interested in these two homes, and you can see those renderings, uh, before you. Um, so first, we'll talk about, uh, Casa Dorado. And what you could see is that this is an elevation of the property. This is the lot, the variance that is the greatest variance, and we're willing to, of course, withdraw this variance, but we wanted to show you what these two homes look like, because they'll be the subject of Lot nineteen, which is a larger lot. Uh, but of course, we recognize that, uh, Casa Dorado may not have a place in this lot, but because it has been requested, uh, from many potential purchasers, we did wanna bring it, uh, to you. So this is the Casa Sol that I mentioned earlier, and this is your Santa Barbara-style, um, estate, in this traditional style. Um, so this is the cohesive neighborhood that we're intending to build, and as we deal with varying lot sizes, it's important for the streetscape and the front setbacks to be aligned as well as the caliber of homes. Um, for this lot in specific, uh, you'll see that the rear yard of the property has significant erosion by the lake, and this unique condition results in a lot depth of only ninety-nine point three eight feet at the shortest point, uh, where on average, the lot depth within this subdivision is over a hundred and fifteen feet. As you can imagine, dealing with the rear setback with this significantly decreased depth, um, is a practical difficulty. We mentioned earlier that this is the smallest of the lots within the community at seven thousand seven hundred and forty square feet. The average lot size is over eleven thousand square feet. And again, this decreased lot size adds for this practical difficulty of allowing a home of this caliber on the site. Uh, when I say a home of this caliber, what we find is that, uh, there is a significant demand for a thir- three-car garage. Many people, although they have two cars, they like to have golf carts, uh, for recreational use within the community, and that is why, what we're suggesting as far as, um, our requests go. Um, so we do have these two variance requests, uh, rear setback as well as lot coverage. First, uh, dealing with the rear setback. Um, we're requesting this rear setback for both of the home designs. Um, the setback itself is at seventeen feet, where twenty-five feet is required. And as it relates to the lot coverage, uh, we're asking for a lot coverage of, the highest one is forty-two point two percent, and the other one is thirty-six point five percent. Again, the one with the higher lot coverage, the Dorado, uh, we're willing, of course, to withdraw that request. So back to, um, how the actual pro, the actual models, uh, sit on the actual lot. It was asked, what was that, um, line going through it? And you can see what we've highlighted in red on the screen is, in fact, uh, the area of the variance. And this is the actual setback variance. Notably, this setback variance is only for a, um, a, um, terraza. Um, it has a covered roof, uh, but it, and it only includes a very small portion of the actual built structure. While it's covered, there's not a second story above it. Um, so we feel that this is, because no one else is impacted, uh, by this rear, uh, setback, we believe that it is a fair request, uh, to ask for this covered... we believe that it is a fair request to ask for this covered loggia as well as a small portion of the rear bathroom that encroaches to be the subject of this variance request. As it relates to Casa Dorado, you can see that a portion of the covered loggia is also within that setback as well as a small portion of the dining room. The portion of the dining room does have a second story above, but the loggia is not covered. So as it relates to the practical difficulty criteria, the adjoining properties are all owned by the applicant. And of course, new purchasers will all have notice of this proposal. So there's not any adjoining property owners that would be negatively impacted by our requests. The variances are compatible with the development patterns within this area where all these lots are dealing with different depths, sizes, as well as lake erosion. The adjoining lots are all owned by the applicant and will benefit from these properties and these models, providing a home that is compatible and uniform in frontage as well as with the same caliber of rear yards within this area. The plight of the applicant is unique. It's simply due to the unique nature of this property and the lake erosions that have occurred over years. Because of the actual configuration of these lots, they're not able to be actually taking care of that submerged land in the same way that we were able to do along 100, the homes that were fronting 162nd Street. Finally, these existing conditions requiring a variance are the result of simply the unique shape of the lake and not any result of the applicant. To summarize, we would like to move forward with these two variances. Again, setback and lot coverage, at least for the Casa Sol property, where those variances are smaller and more reasonable. And again, willing to withdraw the Dorado model from your consideration if that's the will of this board. We believe that constructing a home of this caliber is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood as well as this subdivision. Furthermore, the previous approval of Palma del Lago identifies this much smaller lot, and the demand for the smaller home was not there. We thought that there would be a demand especially for empty nesters as well as individuals who would want a one-story residence instead of a two-story residence. But what we've learned is that that demand is not there along, on these lakefront properties. So with that, I'm available for any questions that you may have, and I thank you for your time.
When these lots were platted, weren't the models already in place?
No.
To fit on the lots?
The property was platted in 2008, so it was subdivided without any actual models or subdivision. We had the site plan approved in 2023, and more recently, we came back to deal with the actual tie-in of the lakefront and deal with the erosion.
Through the chair, I have a question. And filling in the area, I see in a couple of places it's showing there's a crosshatch. This is area to be filled. And that's the only area they're allowing you to fill?
Yes.
And that is by, who's decided?
Miami-Dade County Durham.
Durham is the one that decided that?
Yes. In the lots that are on 162nd, we were able to construct a system. Exactly, a riprap system. But here, we're not able to do that, so we would have to use the typical slope.
Through the chair, does anybody else have questions for her?
I don't have any more questions for her.
No? No? Do you want to close it so we can discuss it, or?
Okay, we can close the discussion in public.
I don't think the public, is there anybody?
There's no one online as well.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask the staff a question. I see that on the recommendations, you recommended one, but not two? What staff recommendation?
Correct.
First variance request, one, you recommend, but the second one, denial?
Correct. So the setback.
The reason being, so I know.
So the setback seems like an easy variance. It's an irregular lot. Obviously, it's going to be hard getting a good 25-foot setback in there. The, most of the portion that is encroaching on the setback is an open terrace, with the exception of that tiny little corner. There's plenty of room to put in a pool and put in amenities without additional variances. So the setback one gives me very little heartburn. It just doesn't really, when you start talking about increasing the lot coverage, that's where I start getting more, because technically, the builder could choose to offer a home that would meet the lot coverage.
The 35 feet.
Correct. So that's why that one technically doesn't meet the conditions of the variance for the strict requirements of staff being able to recommend in favor of it.
Yeah, it's like 1.5%.
And that's where the hair gets split, right? So that's why one, correct. One of them meets the conditions of the variance because it's obviously an irregular lot. It's obviously a weird situation going on there that needs to be accommodated. The other one is more of a choice of what kind of home model they're choosing to offer.
So my question would be.
For sale on a lot, right?
Would the town be all right with the 36.5% coverage? Which is 1.5% more.
1.5 over.
Over?
Right. That would be better than the 42.
Yes.
I would, I have.
I have a real problem with the 42% lot.
Yeah, no, correct, yes.
Real, real. I mean, I'm.
I do too.
Against it. I mean, the 36, it's, you know, it's okay. But the 42, I will not, I will not.
And through the chair, we do have a precedent for the 36.5 to allow. The last lake that Lovell did, homes were allowed to have 38% in the last section of Royal Oaks. Versus the original, that was only 35%. That was obtained back in the days when it was DeKalb.
I'll make a motion for discussion basis so that we can discuss it completely, that we approve based, number one, as requested. And then, number two, only the 36.5% for discussion, so.
And I will second that motion. I mean, that was the reason that I asked the applicant, you know, if the, if the design of the houses was done prior to the plotting.
Correct.
So at the time of site plan approval, the builder came in with several models. I think it was up to six at one point. Some of them were removed. There was a chart that was created to see which model homes fit on which particular lots. As of right now, I think some of those models have been removed out of, maybe because they were, I don't really know why that'd be for.
Just demand.
Yeah, just demand. But it seems like of the array of models that were being offered at the time of site plan approval, some of them are no longer being requested, demanded.
The price per square foot is the thing. The smaller the model, the less income they have. So I understand that part. If you have a model that has less square footage, then.
In reality, they've been offered, they just have not been, we haven't had a purchaser. There hasn't been the interest. So with that, you know, I would respectfully.
So you're happy you have more square footage to sell?
People want more square footage. People want a third-car garage, a three-car garage. People want a lot of things. What I would like is to move forward with Casa Sol and withdraw the Dorado.
I think we're basically there right this moment, yeah? With the staff recommendation?
Yeah.
I think you could call the roll.
Well, the motion is on the floor.
Well, the motion is on the floor. I already made the motion, and it's been seconded by you, so we could just vote on it at this point.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, so calling roll on the, didn't need to call the roll for motion for discussion, correct? This is now the actual.
Yes. Yeah, it's closed. The discussion is closed.
Okay, understood.
And we're calling.
Launcio, yeah. So motion by De La Sierra, and then seconded by Launcio, correct? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Board member Cruz?
Yes.
Board member Julia?
Yes.
Board member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Vice Chair Senna?
Yes.
And Chairman Launcio?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the next matter and the final quasi-judicial matter is variance 2025-0047. This is for property located 441 Northwest 160th Street, Miami Lakes Florida 33016. And the applicant is also GT Homes Miami Lakes LP. We will hear from staff first. If any of you have any ex parte communications, you've already said, stated no, but you changed your mind and want to put anything else you can't.
I don't have any ex parte communications.
Haven't had any contact?
I haven't had any contact either.
Okay, Justin Tellaria, Planning and Transportation. This is variance request VARH 2025-0047. Like was said, this is, the address we have here is 8441 Northwest 160th Street. And this will be Lot 19 of the subdivision that was previously mentioned. The first request is to allow a rear setback of 20 feet, where 25 feet is typically required. And then the second request is to allow for a lot coverage of 37.2%, where 35% is the maximum permitted. Staff recommends approval of the first and denial of the second. That's it.
Through the chair. So I guess here, again, we have two different models. And then if it's the smaller version, they're okay with maximum lot coverage?
37. They're up to 37 on the smaller model on this one.
37.2, yeah.
On the smaller or on the bigger model?
On the bigger.
It could be on the bigger model, no?
They're just showing 137, the 37.2.
Because this lot looks to be substantially bigger than the other one.
Hold on, let me get that straight.
The variance on this one is for 37.2% only.
They're just seeking, they're just seeking a variance for the model that would require 37.2%, not the other one.
Right. And, but the setback would be still for both?
The setback, yeah. Of 20, yes.
So which one would be Casa del Sol would be the one that would be the 37%, not Casa Dorado? Casa Dorado would be. The Casa Dorado would be withdrawn, I believe. Or I'm looking at.
Yeah. I believe Casa del Sol.
Casa del Sol would be the one that would be used.
So Ms. Tappanaz, if you can, if I may, if you remove the Casa Dorado, then you no longer need a lot coverage variance for this one? Am I correct?
It would be for this lot. But I think she removed it for the first one, for Lot 18, not for Lot. I'm speaking for you, but I understood that.
Yes, through the chair, Melissa Tappanaz, 200 South Biscayne Boulevard, Miami. The reason why we are asking for here, and we think that the variance for Casa Dorado is important, is so that we don't have the same model. We don't have the possibility of the same model next to each other. So because it's a lot coverage of 37.2, there's precedent up to 38, I personally am less, you know, I'm comfortable requesting this with a straight-faced. The lot is larger, I can.
Dorado is, would be 37%.
Correct. For the Sol, we would not require any lot coverage variance. We only need the setback variance.
The Casa Dorado is the one with a three-car garage.
Correct.
And a little bit more square footage.
Yes, so this is the, this is the location. It's just east of Lot 18. You can see that it's, has the same configuration, that concave of the lake, but it's not as severe. This is the Casa Sol model. This is the Dorado model. This model is the one that requires the variance of lot coverage to, from 35% to 37.2%. Again, the goal is to have a cohesive neighborhood, but not it be like cookie cutter next to each other. So that's why I thought it was worth requesting this variance for this lot. You can see that the lot depth is a similar situation as the other lot, and that's really the reason why we need these variances. The lot depth is under 100 feet. The lot size is 8,800 square feet, larger than the Lot 18. We're asking for the setback variances on both to 20 feet and a little bit over 20 feet. But the lot coverage is only for the Dorado at 37.2 feet. And again, the goal is so that you don't, you don't have the possibility of both models being next to one another. This is the way Lot 19 looks like as it relates to the rear setback variance. You can see it in red. It's only the loggia that has that configuration. And the same thing goes with the Casa Dorado as well. It's a very small encroachment, but it is, it's a small encroachment, but it is only that 20 feet. Again, we believe the practical difficulty is satisfied here. This is a unique configuration. There is significant erosion to these lots. No one, there are no neighbors or issues with the community. They're intended to be compatible, both from the street side as well as the rear when you're enjoying your lake views. So with that, available for any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time.
You say that the lot coverage is 37%. Is it 36.5 or is it 37?
It's 37.2%. It's thirty-seven point two percent. The, the one for the original lot nine, the lot eighteen was the thirty-six point five.
Okay, so this is incorrect, it's not thirty-six point five.
No, it doesn't show thirty-six point five in that one. You gotta go to the other one.
Yeah, they look the same because it's lot eighteen and nineteen, but oh, no, it's.
Lot eighteen is thirty-six point five.
Thirty-seven percent for the Dorado.
Thirty-seven point two.
Thirty-seven point two, right.
And I apologize if there's a typo somewhere. I try really hard. I actually had a nightmare that I switched the, the files, and I said the wrong numbers, right?
Got it, sorry.
These are the nightmares of lawyers. Only Lorenzo would understand.
Yeah, I was trying to get to the page. Yeah, page sixty-seven shows it.
Yeah, yeah, sixty-four.
The lot is actually over a thousand square foot bigger than eighteen. Yeah, it's in both. Page sixty-four and then page sixty-seven shows the thirty-seven point two. Through the chair, how about question for staff whenever she's done? When she's finished, when she's finished. You have to close anyway.
You finished? Yeah, okay, so we're clo, we, we close the, the public discussion.
And through the chair, a question for staff. The thirty-seven point two percent would stop.
Again, if you already, if you're comfortable with going in the other one, obviously, this is all, also a small increase. You know, this is, is a small enough amount?
But it was brought up that they approved thirty-eight percent coverage.
So remember that my recommendation is always going to be much more conservative because my recommendation only hinges on every one of those seven conditions being met. Makes sense? So that's why my recommendation is always going to be a lot more conservative than anything you guys can have leadway for. And that's why they're here, right?
Right, but we respect your time.
I, I appreciate that. I, I, that's why I love you all, but. So no, thirty-seven point two is not horrible.
It's not horrible.
It's not horrible.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-foot setback from twen, uh, from twenty-five feet. And I, I'd like to make a motion for approval for, for the thirty-seven point two percent lot coverage.
I'll second that.
And the twenty-foot setback as well?
Yeah, twenty-foot setback, yes.
Okay, so both.
Okay, calling roll with the motion by Avellino and seconded by Senna. Board member Julia?
Yes.
Board member De La Sierra?
Yes.
Board member Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Senna?
Yes.
And Chairman Leóncio?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Have a good evening. Good evening.
All right, um, Mr. Chair. If I may, there's one final item for you and for your consideration. This was an item that was deferred from the last meeting. This is an ordinance that the town council will be considering next week in second reading. It is making changes to short-term rental ordinance that we have. We have it for you. And, you know, we're, we're willing to listen to any suggestions you might have to make this a better ordinance. Your recommendations, part of your role is not only to act in a quasi judicial role, which you just did, in making, uh, in, in acting as, as a judiciary, you know, and, and making these rulings, but it's also acting as the town's local planning agency. In that function, as a local planning agency, you need to review these ordinance and, and either make recommendations or approve them, make the recommendation to approve them as is, or denial. You, you also have the ability to, to do that, and it's, your, your decision in, in making that is given weight by, by the council. So that's my spiel. If you have any questions with regards to this particular ordinance, both Suzanne and myself are willing to listen and answer them in the best way possible.
Through the chair, I have, go ahead.
No.
Can I guess? Through the chair, I have a couple of questions. I've discussed this with several, I guess, community members back and forth, and the biggest question that I've been asked is, for what period are they going to allow the Airbnbs to, to operate? Two days, three days, which both is going to be the minimum amount of time, because the concern is people coming in and throwing parties and disrupting the neighborhood and upsetting the neighbors.
Yeah.
In order for them to make money on a three-day rental.
I understand, and, and the problem is.
Hurting the community.
I, I understand. Part of the problem and the challenge that we face as, as a, as a town is that we are very much preempted by the state in what we can do and what we can't. You can't tell a homeowner necessarily that wants to rent through Airbnb, you're limited to two days, three days. I mean, I myself, and I'm sure many of you maybe have, I've gone, when I've gone up to Tallahassee for day days, I'll rent on Airbnb. And I'll stay there for a couple of days, two, three days. Uh, so it's, we don't have really a lot of teeth to be able to do that. What we do have is in regulating how they, they advertise, how they keep their property, to make sure that they follow our ordinances, that we have teeth in.
So if they want to rent for one day, they can?
They can.
They can. That's, that was a question I've been asked a lot. I said I had no idea.
So when I rent, uh, there's some, some suggestions that they have to advise the town as to how long they're gonna be there. Uh, there's, there's.
There's teeth.
There's good recommendations here that, that.
There's things that we can do, that is correct, Mr. Chair, and there's things that we can do to make them more compliant, or make sure that we put their feet to the fire in a better way, uh, to follow our, our municipal code. They, that we can do.
In, in reference to what De La Sierra said.
Yes.
About, you know, about loud parties or, you know, things like that, that would, uh.
Yep.
Predatize the, the neighbors.
Correct.
Right, that's, that's one of the biggest things, that, questions that I've been asked is the short-time party that comes in and creates a nuisance for the neighbors. But I'm sure if it creates a nuisance enough times, that their license will be taken away.
So I, I'll mention to you also that as part of, you know, and some of the, the underlying parts are the, the sections that were increasing, were, were improving. For instance, in increasing the fines for two-fifty and five-hundred dollars for repeat violations.
Correct.
And requiring that they obtain certain inspections by the fire department. And one of the things is that if, if this moves forward, there will be a resolution, all right, it's, it's for council consideration that is going to assist the, the town in monitoring the registrations of these short-term rentals, where they're located in the town, and to ensure that they're being regulated. If they're not, it will assist us in sending our code compliance officers to those particular areas. So that's something else that the council's going to be considering. It's not part of this ordinance, but just to let you all, make you all aware, that's something that's going to be brought for the.
To, to the chair, why, why couldn't we adopt something like, um, let's say Monroe County has in place? Monroe County has in place the, the license to, to, I think they call it the hotel license, that you can rent your home or your apartment, whatever it is, for as many days as you want.
I think they have a minimum. They have a minimum thirty days.
Well, no, not if you, if you, that is, if you don't have the hotel license. So there are two different types. If you don't have the hotel license, license, you can only rent for thirty days and above your property. But if you do have the, the hotel license, then you can rent for, for a weekend or whatever you want. Why couldn't we adopt something like that?
The, the problem is, is that.
And then they have to pay a fee, obviously, for, uh.
And your question's excellent, and there's, there are several reasons why that happens. Number one is that Monroe County had established a lot of these rules, a lot of these ordinances, prior to short, the, the Florida's, I'm sorry, the Florida Legislature adopting short-term rentals. So there is a carve-out for certain counties and certain municipalities that had adopted some of these rules prior. In, in certain cases.
Their grandfathered in.
Their grandfathered in. In certain cases, with regards to hotels and even hotel taxes, those even go further back. And there's further carve-outs. Like in Miami Beach, there's other additional rules that they have there that other cities in, in Miami, Dade County, even if they adopted certain ordinances prior to the short-term rental, they can enforce and we can't. We were, we're a very new municipality, we're very young. So a lot of these things are things that happened prior. Some of them are happened prior to incorporation, other happened afterwards, but we, we did not have any ordinance in place. So we're kind of behind the eight ball, so to speak. So that's why Monroe County is able to do it, we can't, we're preempted from doing it.
I see. How about taxes? Are taxes imposed?
It's the same issue, and that goes even further back.
Hotel tax.
Hotel tax.
Exactly. So in, in Miami Dade, in Miami Dade County, Miami Beach is one of the few ones that can impose a hotel tax. I think the city of Miami might be able to, and that's about it.
On number eleven, there's a scribe's error. It's, uh, it says to the fullest exted. Right here, I have it yellowed out here. Fulllest exted. There's a scribe's error there. And I suggest in, uh, section thirteen sixteen thirty-three, item one, English and Spanish. You may want to do French because of the, the Creole community, but I mean, that's just a suggestion. And number four, it says that the person that's responsible for the unit has to be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Does that mean that they have to respond immediately when you call them? Or is there a response lag there? That was.
I mean, we're not creating response lag by emergency.
I mean, are you gonna allow a response?
On number five, it has a two-hour there.
Exactly. When they call you to answer, a phone call answer.
Not at the property. In the town.
Right, I just want to make sure that that, that was the intent there. That was the intent there.
But, right, but four and five are contradictory then.
Register with the town.
What happened, Mr. Julio? So.
Not on the property, but, um.
Register with the town.
A person that can be contacted, responsible party, they can respond.
Right.
But that person has, according to five, two hours to respond.
Within two hours.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Julio was.
What I'm, I just, I think that the person may be available twenty-four, seven, but as long as they're, they're able to respond within two hours. So I, I can't, I, I don't think it's like you call them at three o'clock in the morning and they have to pick up the phone.
No, there's a lag time.
That's, that's the question, how much lag time?
I think that was the question that they were asking.
So I believe it's two hours.
Two hours, because I, I wrote it down, wondering what it would be. It doesn't say that.
I think it does.
Yeah, number five, it says, be situated close enough to the property as to be able to and shall respond to emergency calls within two hours of notification.
Does it?
Number five. Number five. Now, I will say that in the ordinance in the town of Hollywood, it has sixty minutes. I don't know what.
Sixty minutes?
If you want to make that suggestion for the council to consider.
I have a couple of suggestions.
Sure, please.
That, so in the city of Hollywood, they actually require that the owner install something called the noise monitor.
Okay.
Just, if we want to, they do have that, and they are companies, noise-aware, that actually install and monitor, because it's a monitored, it's kind of like an alarm.
Okay.
Inside the residence?
Inside the house.
Okay.
It's required in, in the town of Hollywood, that you install a noise monitor.
House is not a hotel.
I know. This is just, um, the ordinance in Hollywood.
Right, right, okay, yeah, no, you're, you're throwing a, a suggestion.
No, yeah, it's, it's, it's not the most convenient thing for a homeowner, but I, you know, they're doing it, so I'm assuming.
No.
It's not a bad idea.
In our properties, we, we have a maintenance guy.
Right.
But if, if your toilet plugs at two o'clock in the morning.
We're not going to.
You're gonna have to deal with it for, for, for the hours.
All right. The, the town of Hollywood also requires that the person that's designated as the responsible party is supposed to conduct an onsite inspection of the vacation rental at the age, at the end of each rental period to assure that they're in compliance with the requirements.
Okay.
And to maintain a log for three years of all guests, as well as these inspections, that has to be available for inspection. The other thing is that in Hollywood, that, and then this would refer to our thirteen-six-thirty-one, we're, we're doing a number nine, we're requesting, um, the licensing from Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation. I am not sure if Miami Dade County has a license. I can tell you that Broward County does have a license. So in Hollywood, you have to do Florida Department of Business as well as Broward County.
Miami Dade may have one, I'm not sure, but that's not bad to, to add it that, you know, Miami Dade County is applicable.
We would, I would suggest that we add it at thirteen-six-thirty-one-nine, and also when you have the standards and requirements for vacation rentals, at thirteen-sixteen thirty-four dash two, there's again the Florida Department, the minimum requirements that I would add there in Miami Dade County as well.
Okay.
I know Hialeah has licenses for leasing warehouses that they're requiring now, so I'm sure it can be implemented. I have to have a license for every warehouse that I lease.
Warehouse is a little different than this.
I know, but it's still space.
Yeah, but warehouse is meant for more like business space or, you know, storage space, where these are meant more for like, you know, kind of a hotel type use.
But you know, me as the lease owner.
Uh huh.
Are required to have a license just to lease, besides the license that they have to pull to operate.
Great, yeah, like a BTR.
Right.
Right, yes, that's true.
Lorenzo, do we have a, a count of how many properties that we're talking about that are involved in this kind of transactions?
I mean, we've defined, I think in the hundreds.
In the town?
In the hundreds?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's quite a few.
Are they mostly apartments or?
No, homes.
Homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I got a call about this today.
Yes. Yeah, so he, he brings up a great point, you know, about garages being leased. And so that's one of the reasons why, once this moves forward to, the second part is what we just discussed.
People are leasing garages, are making a room in a garage and leasing it.
Yeah, having a company that can go out there and, and basically assist us in identifying where all these short-term rentals are occurring, so that way we can enforce our, our laws a little bit more.
Can we include, because I, unfortunately, I'm the recipient of a couple of violations that also have a daily fine. Is there a reason why we're not including a daily fine after? Because I know it says two-fifty for the first time and five hundred. But unfortunately, sometimes in our county, you get the first one, and then they want to accrue a daily fine of a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks, or whatever it is.
Well, that's, I'm reading it because it should, it should say that there's a daily fine, because most of our code compliance does, you know.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm reading thirteen sixteen thirty-five, the administration penalties enforcement.
Yeah, I'm seeing the two-fifty.
On item C, which I think is a new addition.
It is.
I don't know if there's another, I don't.
No, no, I, I think you're, I think you're right, we can add.
I don't think I, I saw a daily fine anywhere else.
I, I don't see it, no.
There was another question that I had, um, so on thirteen sixteen thirty-one, number ten, it seems to indicate the homeowners' association part. Is there, basically, we can't require, because I'm ninety-nine percent sure that most homeowners' associations are not going to approve of short-term rentals in their community.
Ours doesn't, but they still render, but they're still a render. I mean, Lake Patricia, our homeowners' association.
That's what I was gonna go, there's no way to. That's where I was gonna go, there's no way to require that you have to, if you are in a homeowner association, that you, because that's kind of something that comes up with Royal Oaks and other, as a town, we can't require that.
Even with the, even with Royal Oaks, we'll ask them to send an affidavit that they've, they're seeking approval or they're aware, but we can't force that. I mean, no, our, our laws are our laws and homeowners associations, that's private.
So, so, really, there's really no, no difference, uh, in, 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 in certain way, no difference than what Hialeah has, that they have a home and then they have a room, they open a door through the outside, and then they rent it.
Well, so let's, let's talk about that. Let, let's talk about that. I mean, one thing is, one thing is short-term rentals, the other thing is our code. The reason that you have this document here, this law, is to, A, be able to somewhat regulate and make sure that it's habitable. B, make sure that whoever is the operator understands that they have to abide by the town of Miami Lakes by creating a registry program. I, I mean, we have a pretty, I think, robust and strict code enforcement as compared to, I don't wanna name any cities, but as compared to other municipalities. So the idea is that once we, is, besides having the code, having the policing arm or the policing assistance so that we can identify those homes and be able to cite them accordingly.
And if I may remind the board, um, you all participated in passing our community residential guidelines, which any situation like that would fall under as well.
Under that.
So, eh, by renting just a room, they would probably trigger a community residence, um, trigger on the residential guidelines.
Again, they exist.
Correct, the problem is that, eh, eh, the, the issue that we have right now is identifying which properties are doing this.
Exactly.
And which is why we're trying to tighten up the code in a way that allows us to identify these properties and, and certainly, uh, make sure that they're complying with both this section of the code and other sections of the code, including residential guidelines for, for community residences.
Now, one more question on this, is the sexual predator, which, uh, in my neighborhood, we had one for a while, and I assisted by doing work for the people and they got rid of the sexual predator that kept showing up over there in Lake Patricia area. But my question is, how are we gonna enforce sexual predators? How, how can they prove that, okay, the people that are coming in, none of them is a sexual predator? Are you gonna require?
Well, I mean, again, they're not living there, it's short-term.
I understand.
It's gotta be for less than a certain period of time. Can you completely a hundred percent?
I think what's the, the law is forty-eight hours? Is it forty-eight hours or seventy-two?
Uh, I, I, not a hundred percent, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
They could come and visit, but if they're found there and they've been there more than so many hours.
Yes.
They go to jail.
Correct, if they are within a certain, uh, boundary of, of a school or.
Or, 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 or school park or a place where a child is picked up by a school bus.
We've had incidences before in, in, in the town's history where that's happened, you know, where we, where we found somebody. And, and it can happen, so, take a look at, uh, Bob Graham, there's a couple hotels around Bob Graham. So it could happen there, you know, where that, that happens. So forget about short-term rents, we have hotel properties where that can happen. So that's, that's something for our police department really to be able to investigate and look into and, you know, monitor.
It's, it's a little harder. It's a little harder for someone to be a sexual predator and drag somebody into a hotel as opposed to dragging them into a house or whatever, it's the only, the only thing I see, you know? If you, house next door, the kids are there next door and, you know, that would be the only concern.
Understood. So, I mean, I've, I've listened to your, uh, suggestions, if you wanna pass a motion for us to bring these suggestions to the council, we can. If you have any additional ones, we can listen to those as well.
We'll let you make the motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion to, uh, move forward with the revisions to the ordinance with, uh, some of the items that we've discussed.
And so to, what I'll do is, I, I've, I've written them down.
And I'm emailing them to you too.
Thank you.
That include noise monitor, the possibility of installing noise monitor.
The ones that I, I, I have, so, just quickly, I had, uh, wherever.
Sorry, I have wherever it says English and Spanish to add Creole, uh, to add in the sections that it refers to, uh, obtaining a license to make sure that they also obtain one from Miami Dade County if applicable, because I'm not sure if, if it is. Uh, the installation of a noise monitor, uh, the, um, the response time, uh, from two hours to sixty minutes. Um, to, at the end of each rental period, uh, to have an inspection, uh, an, an inspection of the property, uh, and for, uh, log of visitors to be maintained and available for inspection at, uh, any time that the, the town desires to see it. Um, and then as far as the daily fine, uh, as, as far as the fine, for there to be a daily fine provision, uh, added.
Then inspection would be the owner do the inspection.
The responsible party basically is the way it's defined.
Yeah, for them to call for inspection from the city, right?
No, actually, what it is, is it's kind of your own.
You police yourself?
Yeah, and you have to maintain a record of that, I don't.
For a city employee to come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The way that they do it in, in, or the way that they say that you're supposed to do it, is you have to keep record.
And then.
Make responsible a person, you know, kind of self-monitoring thing, but, you know. The other item that I saw that I'll send out to you here is that it said that, um, you have to advertise in your advertising that the venue is not available for any commercial purpose, including any party, blah, 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 you know.
Okay.
That is part of the required advertising, which, that's what they put in the Hollywood thing, and that could be something that we could police just from looking at, I'm assuming that's the way we're gonna be policing this, cause that's the way I found out about this thing. I had a unit in, in Hollywood that I did advertise in VRBO, I had no idea we had to get these licenses. And that's how I got a, I got a really nice letter with a snapshot of my unit on the VRBO that first, you know, normally if you go to VRBO, it has like this first, first picture, that's always like the nicest one.
Right.
They screenshotted that, and they attached it to the violation going like, hey, do you know you have to register? At least the first one was a courtesy warning.
Right.
With the snapshot of VRBO, so it was not a question as to whether it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or it wasn't. And then I, it's when I inquired about this whole thing, when I saw those things, I went like, forget it, I just rented it year-round and to heck with this, but.
Got it.
That's how I became aware of the regulations in Hollywood several years ago.
Okay.
How about leasing these things for a wedding?
Well, that's why they have the provision that you technically, if it's a venue, it's considered a commercial event, and therefore you can't do it, at least in Hollywood.
So, commercial space that you would rent for a wedding would have to be a commercial space. You would have to have bathrooms that are rated for.
Parking.
Parking, um, and many other things that a single-family home would not meet.
But not happen. You're just curious. I'm not gonna go get married. Fifty years in.
All right, so if, eh, there's no other, uh, just a motion, second and.
I'll second the motion.
Julia.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so roll call per item five D with these suggestions made. Motion by Julia and seconded by de la Sierra. Board member Cruz?
Yes.
Board member Julia?
Yes.
Board member de la Sierra?
Yes.
Vice Chair Senra?
Yes.
And Chairman Leóncio?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Now we just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Is there a second?
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Uh, make sure everybody sign the ex-party communication paperwork, the ex-party communication sheet, just sign it and leave it in front of you.
Oh, signed it?